Good evening, welcome to the April tenth New Market Planning Board meeting. Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comments. Any going from the public have any comments that are non-agenda items? Hearing none, we will close the public comments section. Item three is review and approval of minutes. On the first set of minutes is two thirteen eighteen. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the planning board meeting minutes from February thirteenth twenty eighteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, comments?
Do we have a required quorum or whatever it's is for people who attended that call, that meeting? Because that was the issue in the last meeting.
I don't know. I don't have the minutes.
I was there.
Here's the minutes.
Did you watch the meeting? Did you watch the meeting?
Peter is no longer on the meeting.
I wasn't here.
Right, but did you watch that meeting?
There's no internet in St. Thomas.
Oh. Are you sure you're still there?
I didn't see either.
Well, you have to vote on it because it's never gonna be a quorum.
Right. That's right. That's right.
But I don't...
I read them.
I think I asked him, the town counsel, legal counsel at one point, and he said that it doesn't matter whether or not they were there or not.
Because you're really just voting.
Because you're just voting.
Or you can abstain and it's still gonna pass.
Right.
I read them.
We have no option. I mean, there's this is the board.
You can't change it.
Right. All right. So is there any changes? Any comments on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is March twentieth minutes. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March twentieth, two thousand and eighteen.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I have one comment.
Sure.
On item number four, for the de vote section, we're all in favor, it should say it will be set or refused.
Excuse me, Bill? Can you go to the page number and the line, please?
There are no... Page three, line thirty-three.
Thank you.
It will be set refused.
That's what he did.
All right, any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next, I'm gonna take one thing out of order. Diane is gonna recuse herself from the last item on the agenda, so she will be leaving before that. So I let her give her a report. She has one or two briefings to report on.
I just have one thing, and that is that the registration is still open for the planning conference that's coming up on April twenty-eighth, Saturday, which is gonna be held at the Grafton Conference Center in Concord. So if you haven't already signed up and you're interested in going, please do. And I think we sent around an agenda item at the last meeting, gave you the link to go online and register online. And the town will pick up the registration fee and the travel costs associated with your coming and going to the conference. And the new members in particular, the new alternates will attend that because it'll be a good overview of what the planning board does and what the role of the board is and so forth. So I highly recommend.
Fantastic this morning.
Very good. Excellent.
Is that it, Diane?
Yep, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Item four is organizational meeting, election of chairman and vice chairman.
I'd like to nominate Eric Barnum for chairman.
Second.
Any discussion? Any other nominees? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. One more here. Vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Valerie Shelton for vice chairman.
Second.
Any discussion? Any other nominees? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Does anyone have it? Thank you. So first item on regular business is Jonathan Smith and Caitlin Smith, continuation of request for waiver of impact fees for accessory apartment at fourteen Woods Drive, tax map U one, lot one dash fifty in the R two zone. That is continued until May eight.
May eighth, when that was sent to the applicant.
And so that is in front of the proposed changes in front of town council at this point.
Diane, at first reading.
Yes. At first reading, it was going to be a public hearing in April late eight.
Yes.
Is there any motion to continue that?
Yes.
May eighth.
May eighth.
Okay. Make a motion to continue the request for a hearing on a request for waiver of impact fees for accessory apartment at fourteen Woods, tax map U one, lot one dash fifty in the RT two zone to the planning board meeting of May eighth, twenty eighteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is Maplewood and Bond Holding Company LLC, continuation of a public hearing for an application for a site plan at one seventy-seven Exeter Road, tax map R three, lot seven in the B two zone. Excuse me. The proposal is for a twenty-four thousand square foot standalone industrial building with municipal water and sewer. The application previously approved would not be constructed. The full application may be due after planning off the town hallway and six Main Street in New Market during business hours. So we'll continue the public hearing. I understand there's a recommendation from the planning office.
Would you like me to review it, yes?
Yes.
If you recall at the February twelfth meeting, this was on the agenda and there was some extensive discussion. And at that meeting, the planning board agreed unanimously to postpone taking action on the application until the TRC was able to work with the applicant on some issues. And primarily it pertained to the design for the sewer system. And there was some questions that came up about vesting and the timeframe and phrasing of the development, phasing, excuse me, of the development. And we did indeed have a TRC meeting that was attended by, I believe Valerie, you were there? And who else was there?
Gretchen? No.
Probably Rosie.
Rosie, thank you. And it was an excellent meeting, and we were able to come to an agreement. And the engineers, from Underwood engineers, were concerned because there wasn't a whole lot of information about sewer design. They were satisfied with the ultimate outcome of the meeting with respect to the sewer design. And we were also able to revise some of the language. So the vesting section was clear, so that it wasn't tied to the actual completion of the various phases, that it's something that will be addressed, it'll be part of the performance guarantee. So we've also in the interim received the final approval from the Department of Transportation on the highway access permit. And we're still waiting on the environmental service approval for the alteration of the terrain permit, which is being recommended as a condition. So having said that, I would like to recommend that the planning board conditionally approved the application. There was one other thing. We did find that there was a section that needed, the plan that was submitted, that needed a waiver because the parking area was within ten feet of the property line. And because this is a B two zone, the setback requirement for parking is thirty feet. So the applicant has presented a request for a waiver. And Mr. Graham is showing you where that area is that needs the waiver that will be hopefully approved as well as part of the proceedings that's in place. Rather than going through each and every condition as we did at the last meeting, hoping that the new members had a chance to review them and I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you may have. I did just want to mention that the only difference from the previous presentation on this is that on I O G, the applicant will provide a final sewer design for lot seven. This is on page two, I O G. And that is something that will be reviewed and approved by the consulting engineer and the town water and sewer superintendent prior to the issues of the building permit. And in order to achieve the final design, it's necessary for them to do television inspections and test kits to verify the condition of the existing sewer. And they have agreed to do that as part of the, as part of one of the conditions of approval. And also, there were some engineering details on the force main that was proposed. And again, that's something that would be coordinated as part of the final design plans. And with those changes, Underwood engineers were satisfied that they had met the original intent of the inquiry. The other change has to do with the estimated construction timeline and phasing. And Rob, I'm gonna let you explain to the planning board the phasing plan that we agreed to that is referenced in the condition. Do you have that with you this evening?
I do, yes.
Good. Thank you.
While you're looking through that, Rob, are you in concurrence with the proposed conditions?
Can you clarify then?
He's gonna present it.
No, I...
Okay. He's gonna present it and explain it.
Okay, and then I want clarification on what we're changing on yours. That's gonna be my question.
We didn't have a plan before.
No, I think he's talking about the...
Language delay.
Okay.
Rob Graham from Maplewood and Bond Holdings. Just getting my voice back, so I'll be brief. What we have set up is a sequence of the construction of the excavation, the construction of the slope, stabilization of the slope, the plantings and restabilization of vegetation. And we've kind of sequenced them in a way that's practical for the process of removal of the material in the industrial park here. We start off here at phase one. What we tried to do is take a look at, we were asked to take a look at getting these slopes stabilized as early as possible and to try and make some investment up here in the buffering area early on. So that's what we've done. We'll be starting in this area at the top of the slope with the construction. We'll start with the, first of all, it will get cut to its grade. Once we reach its grade, we will install the, there's a section of guardrail that gets installed that is just on our side of the property line for the DOT right away. And we will do the plant install up to this boundary point, the landscaping install. We will begin to cut the slope down to the deck, which is the elevation of the building pad. And this is, if you'll see...
Thank you.
Yeah, both.
Is this a different one? A particular one, sure.
It's a different one.
Is it different?
Oh, is it?
I think this sheet incorporates some of the changes that we talked about at the TRC. Can I have it?
Yeah.
Will you leave it in public?
Thank you.
So you see that set up in phase one for spring through November is this phase one, the install of the guardrail and the plantings and continued excavation of the site. And we'll be restabilizing this slope as we go. Stabilization of that slope kind of has to happen as you come down the slope. So you come down ten feet, do the slope, or fifteen or twenty feet, or whatever is for the reach of the equipment, and you keep going down. You wouldn't go all the way to the bottom and then try and restabilize at the top. So we'll be doing, that's what phase one is trying to demonstrate. And then by the fall of two thousand and eighteen, we expect to reach about half of our total quantity into the site. And we will have stabilized the top of the slope with the replantings. And there's a juke mat detail and a loam and seed and that sort of stuff that's set up in the SW pole slope. And then out into, in the phase three by spring of two thousand and nineteen, and we've kind of moved it out. Our timeline might be a little bit faster than that, but we've moved it out for the spring planting schedules. And by then, we will have, we'll have reached a hundred percent of the excavation on this site to reach our slopes. And the stabilization of these slopes will be complete. And they'll be completed as the AOT will require us to do within, I think it's fourteen days of reaching our grade. So that's phase three. And then in phase four would be the pad side grading and those types of the rest of the construction efforts to begin whenever we're ready to get to that. So we've laid out that plan for the stabilization of the slope and the planters.
Thank you, Rob. Does anybody have any questions relative to the phase?
I have Vanessa Ballard's questions. She was inquiring, what's the difference in the current conditions that are being recommended and the previous? Previously, we didn't have a real detailed plan.
Right.
And that was part of the problem. It was very clear as to how the construction and excavation and stabilization would be sequenced throughout the construction process. The original condition just sort of said, well, substantial. It tied to excavation and stabilization of the banks within a twelve-month period and completion of the project within twenty-four months. And that was something that was a concern of the applicant. So we also had an extensive discussion about vesting. And there was a lot of confusion as to the differences between a project that becomes vested in the timeframe for that versus the timeframe for completion that's tied to the performance bond that the town will have in place to assure the work proceeds according to the phasing plan that was presented. So we immediately separated the two. And so we now have the vesting section that clarifies when investing occurs. Investing for the new members is basically immunity from any changes, subsequent changes in zoning regulations. And as Mr. Graham has pointed out, it's really for the benefit of the property owner who invests in a project so they can be assured that their investment isn't, you know, forgotten because the town goes ahead and changes the regulations halfway through the game, so to speak. So the vesting language now is it stays, it says substantial development will occur when there is completion of phases one, two, and three, as shown on this plan. And then the final, which has to happen under the state law within twenty-four months. How am I doing, Rob? I'm just laughing over there. And then after the project is a hundred percent complete, then permanent vesting occurs. And the applicant is immune from any changes to the town zoning regulations and subdivision regulations for an indefinite period thereafter.
Yeah, I thought we agreed on, I thought the language you agreed on was substantial excavation, which is what we used for...
Well, and there has been this one caveat to that, or one change to that that was suggested. Right, so we say as being substantial excavation. And the town's legal counsel suggested that you tie that to something definitive. And we're tying it to phases one, two, and three, as shown on that plan and the timeframe that's articulated on that plan. And he was satisfied that that was clear for active and substantial development for that legal definition. Okay. The other part of it is the performance guarantee, which now is basically phases one, two, and three, which is shown on his plan up here, will be completed by July first, two thousand and nineteen, which is basically eighteen months or sixteen months out from, well, when we started this discussion. And Mr. Graham has indicated that that's, he's agreed in agreement with that timeframe. And that would make sense given how they envision the construction sequencing to occur. And...
Excuse me, Diane, I don't need to interrupt, but evidently there's updated planners?
Yes.
Since March?
March twentieth.
This is, and I did speak to Paige about putting the revised date on the plan, the phasing plan.
No, your planners report, March twentieth?
No, this is not that.
I don't have...
Does everybody else have the March twentieth?
Why don't you have that? You should have this.
Does everybody else have the March twentieth?
You have that? March twenty?
I sent it out to everybody back, and soon Jordan can pop in and anybody's boxes.
I think I hit two in mine.
So, and we worked really hard to wrap up all the language that made sense. It was done before I left on vacation, so it's been available for a while.
But do you want a few minutes to look through that? While you're looking through that, are you okay with the condition says?
Yeah.
Explain, okay.
Explain.
Okay. So first, we should talk about the waivers. The waiver requested parking.
Just that we have received the request from the applicant for the parking waiver on lot seven. And it's from the project engineer who's here this evening, Aunt Libby. And on behalf of her client, she's requesting a waiver from the parking location and that a waiver be allowed to, a way to be granted to allow parking within the setback. And it's shown in the plan to be ten feet from the property line. And so I would recommend that the planning board grant that waiver in its own mind to do so.
Could I just, I'm sorry?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Could I just ask the basis for that recommendation?
I think that given the, you know, it's an industrial site, it's not adjacent to a residential area. It's all being developed by the same developer at this point anyway.
We own both sites.
And you'll continue to own the lots and it's the motor you have currently. So really, I don't think it's, you know, the two uses are compatible. You have two compatible uses next to each other. So what's really important is the buffer around the perimeter, and they have provided that. So I feel from a planning perspective, it makes sense. It is, after all, an industrial park, and that's what you want, is industrial-like uses there. So certainly, if the buildings in the park is a little bit closer to the property line, it's not gonna have a serial to the neighbor, I would think. So that's my justification for that.
Are there any butters here who want to speak to this application? Is any board members have any questions for the applicant? Like that, I won't. Does any board members have any questions for the applicant?
And Rob, I'm sure I just misunderstand, but on your phases and your grading, did you say that you finish the top first before you go down lower?
Yes.
This probably looks opposite.
Yeah, thank you.
Look at phase three. It has glue done and it's complete. And spring in the orange is underway.
Well, this is a continued excavation. This is a continued completion of these loads. Do we have this color coded in correctly?
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's the case.
Okay.
Yeah.
The plan that I tagged...
Switch that color, switch to fresh colors. Yep.
Okay. Made sense.
Yeah, thanks, Bill. I'll correct that.
All right, so that's... Any other questions? All right. I will close the public hearing then. First order of duty will be, is there a motion on the waiver request?
Someone?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor granting the waiver, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? There's a waiver process. So next is the approval itself. Is there a motion or approval of the site plan?
I make a motion to approve this site plan for Maplewood and Bond Holding Company LLC at one seventy-seven Exeter Road, tax map R three, lot seven in the B two zone. Proposal is for a twenty-four thousand square foot standalone industrial building with municipal water and sewer, subject to the conditions outlined in the town planner's memo dated February twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, and revised on March twentieth, two thousand and eighteen.
Is there any second?
Second.
Just a menu, and to, and for the applicant to update the legends, to correct the legends on the phase three section of the PH one.
Excuse me. However technical and housekeeping it is, there is a waiver for the scale of the plans as well for this plan set.
Didn't we grant that in the last?
I thought we...
We granted you two waivers. We granted the two waivers, didn't we?
I thought we granted.
Did we do it? Okay.
The last meeting, we granted the two waivers.
Thank you.
They were on the original.
Yep. Thank you.
That was going to be a showstopper.
I knew it, I knew it.
Let me just double check. Yeah, you got the scale and soil types.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we've made second.
Second to bounce.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And proposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all. Moving on. Next on the agenda is Maplewood and Vaughn Holding Company LLC. Public hearing for an application for site plan requested by Maplewood and Vaughn Holding Company LLC at 175 Exeter Road, tax map R3, lot 6, in the B2 zone. Proposal is for a 22,000 square foot industrial building with municipal water and sewer. So, the first order of business is that we have an application. We might accept the application. Diane, do you have a recommendation on the application?
I do. I have reviewed the application against our application checklist for major site plan review. And there were a couple of items that I found missing. And the applicant has indicated that they are willing and able to provide additional information. One of the items is elevations of the proposed building. And I understand the architect is here this evening. There's going to be a presentation of this.
Correct.
And you'll have a plan that you can provide us for the file. We appreciate that. And the other item had to do with, again, the waiver for scale. One inch equals 20 feet is required. And the plans were at one inch equals 30 feet, so you need a waiver on a scale, which I would recommend be granted. And again, we have the concern about the pavement going close to the property line. In this particular application, it went right up to the property line. And I think that it's really necessary to have some kind of separation. Maybe not, you know, 30 feet, but 10 feet certainly seemed to be a reasonable distance that should be provided. And the applicant has agreed to comply with that, if that's the only is.
So, that would be another waiver request?
So, that would be another waiver request. And that's overall, you know, the plans are substantially complete. They can be accepted for technical review by the technical review committee.
Okay, does anybody have any questions of Diane relative to the application? If there are none, I would entertain a motion to accept the application.
Someone?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of accepting the application, say aye.
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 All opposed? The motion passes unanimously. So, now, Rob will open up to you to give us a quick presentation. I know there is one of body here who may want to comment.
Sure.
But, go ahead, please proceed.
Yes, I'm, sorry.
We see him back there.
Rob Graham from Maplewood and Vaughn Holdings. This is the second site, or most people call this the first site. But we have been in front of this board on this site already. Paige will be doing the presentation here. She'll give you a quick overview. You can ask any questions. And then, we brought Mike Keen this evening with some building elevations. And we'll take some kind of pointers. And then, I'm sure we'll continue and get into the technical review process. So, I'd like to introduce Paige Libby from Joneson Beach Engineers.
Hi there, Paige from Joneson Beach. So, this site has been before the board back in May of 2016, I think it was. We didn't change much. The building's 22,000 square feet. It was 20,000 square feet previously. We have a parking lot to the north of the building and then a loading zone to the south. We're going to extend the guardrail along 108 on the applicant's property as we proposed on lot 7 as well. As Diane said in her review of the application, she recommended that we pull the pavement back away from the property line 10 feet so that we have some separation for the waiver. And then, we have a sec, the second waiver request, as Rob said, is for the scale. And with that, I'll let Michael present it.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, and we have a landscaping plan in the set, also lighting. And we kept all of that virtually the same as the last approval.
Thank you.
Good evening, Michael Keen and Michael Keen Architects here in Newmarket. And this is the revised renderings of the building that, pretty close to what we presented the last time. I think the major difference is the front section of this building. What's shown here in the gray was originally shown as basically being a one-story. It was about a 15-foot to the roof line. In this case, we brought it up to match the warehouse section or the shop section of this. So, we'd be at 26 feet consistently around the building. And we've also shown some mechanical screening for the HVAC units on this building. Because it's set down into the hill and it's a little bit more visible than the back building, we're going to screen, try to screen those units out at the roof line. So, primarily, what the building is, what we're showing here is insulated structural panels. They're going to be a metal panel on the outside. For all intent and purpose, they're flush. There's going to be joints every four or five feet. But once you're back 30 feet, they really soon will disappear. We tried to use the two different colors in this case to distinguish the building, break up the mass a little bit as you come down. You have to remember now, this building is going to be set 10 feet lower than the intersection at Forbes Drive. So, really, the back section of this, again, is sort of behind the slope and not very visible. At the next meeting, we'll show you another drive-through as we had done back in 2016. We'll drive right up the road, turn around, and come back so we can get a sense of how much of the building has seen from Exeter Road. One of the reasons that we've tried to go back up in the front section here, again, is because the building's set down, and we didn't want you to be looking down on that roof. So, we brought that roof line back up so that you're not looking down on that section of the roof. And as you're coming south on Exeter Road, the building was basically going to disappear, disappear behind the berm, at least the front section where the windows were, was going to disappear. So, we brought that up a little bit so you can see in this elevation here, where you're able to now see that second, second level with the windows running through. We've used ribbon windows similar to the rest of the buildings in the industrial park. We bumped up some areas at the entrance there, again, to try to give some relief to the parapet line, break that up a little bit. And another color change, again, wayfinding so you can find your way to the entrance here. So, this elevation is facing Forbes Drive, north elevation. This is looking at as you're coming southbound on Exeter Road. And then, this is just sort of in the first view. Again, from basically that same perspective. Any questions?
I know the last time we went through this, there was a lot of discussion about screening on the roof. This new elevation, does that require screening of the?
Mechanical equipment, we're showing, yeah, we're showing fencing basically around those.
Same as before?
Yeah, yeah. And I really can't determine the height of that until we know exactly what equipment's going up there, but the concept is to screen those units out. Yeah.
And you said the landscaping was the same as?
Previously.
Rob, you worked with Rosie on that last?
Yes, yes, that's what I did with Rosie at the fourth review. And we've, we've imported that exact plan into the plant set. Haven't changed that.
Okay. So, if anybody has any kind of general questions, now's the time to ask them. Otherwise, what we do is set up a TRC. With the TRC, they'll give you details of this. Come back and talk to us at the next meeting or whatever. Paige, you have something to say?
No.
Oh, oh.
Just answer questions.
So, there is a, an of body here. Ralph, do you want to say anything?
No, I'm just perfectly satisfied to listen. My real concern is none of the building's going to be demolished.
I'll hold, Ralph, if, if you want to talk, you've got to come up to the microphones so people at home can hear, but that's fine.
I can repeat it.
If you really want to talk.
Yes, understood.
So, speaking to the demolition of the existing buildings, we were asked by Rick Malaski at our technical review that, who would also like to see them come down. They'd like to use them for a little bit of training and to get them down. We have authorized them to do that. We owe him some insurance paperwork, which we're going to provide them in the next few weeks. And I expect that all to happen pretty quickly. They do, Rick indicated that they do extend the invitation to some surrounding towns so they get some mutual benefit out of it and that kind of thing. So, I can reach out to him and find out an exact schedule. I'll get some contact information from Ralph, and we'll let him know exactly when to expect that.
Great, thank you. If there's no other questions, I'd like, and ready volunteers for the TRC? For the new members, we usually take three members for the TRC that meets. Rob, lying here with Diane and the department head, they didn't go through any issues. Anybody has to go through the details on the design. So, is there any, any volunteers?
Jane.
Jane.
I can not hear.
Sarah. Question?
Does this go off to engineer review?
Yes, it will.
Yes, it will.
We have asked other engineers to provide us with a cost estimate. And once that's available, we'll forward that to Mr. Graham when that gets paid. And once we have payment in hand, we schedule the TRC.
Anybody else want to move? I'll volunteer.
Okay. So, Jane, Sarah, and Harry. And typically, we have our TRC meetings during the day. And we don't have to issue for any of the people who are on here. Because it's hard to get everybody, all the partners together on hours.
So, I know ahead of time it should be fine.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
No, there's a lot.
It's okay.
Then, great. Thanks.
I think good to have an alternate on the TRC. We can't have four show up at once.
Well, that's part of, yeah.
But good to have an alternate.
Yes, yes.
Let's have an al, yeah, do us an alternate. It's a good idea.
So, what will happen? Is this about engineering review? And once we get comments back, we'll get the TRC going to work through those comments and department head comments and all that, so. If everybody's all set, I'll entertain a motion to continue.
Motion to continue the application for Maplewood and Vaughn Holding LLC for site plan at 175 Exeter Road, tax map R3, lot 6, in the B2 zone for a proposed 22,000 square foot industrial building with municipal water and sewer to the May 8th, 2018 meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the guy writing the video.
Video guy?
Just to be sure that he knows that.
Look, tell him I have him. I'll go down and, yeah.
So, we're just going to sit here for a minute because Diane is recusing herself. So, before we discuss the.
I need a key. I'm going to leave my things here and show you the floor. I just want to take care of my.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you. Sounds confused, which one going next?
Well, he should have read it, that Diane should have.
Oh, yes.
But I mean, there was a couple of things on here, that's why.
No, the brand development's already continued.
Well, you have to continue it at the publication.
I thought it was already continued at the last publication.
Oh, was it already?
That was mine. Well, let's go through it then.
Just wait, no, just look over.
Let us continue with.
Continue to the May 8th.
Well.
Correct.
Yeah.
There was?
So, she may have been on here.
Yeah, it was right for once. All right, next on the agenda is Zion Hill LLC, continuation with public hearing for site plan at Five Granite Street, tax map U2, lot 5, in the M2 zone. Proposal is for a change of use within the M2 zone to utilize a second floor of the stone church coming to use for storage as a multi-functional.
Good evening, thank you. So, I believe everyone's read the package and understands the concept of what I'm doing. It said, there's an existing second floor to the stone church. It's been there for whatever, it's, I guess, close to 200 years, yeah, 180 years. No, actually, the second floor only was built in 1900. So, it's only been there for 100 and something years. It was added when it was the, it became the Catholic school. And then, after being the Catholic school, it was a VFW hall. It was used for multipurpose rooms. We've got photographs of stag parties and things of that sort back then. Then, it transitioned into being Newmarket Heal Factory in 1968. They had a fire. And since then, the second floor hasn't really been used for much of anything but storage, or a big portion of it, the back, the ballroom, as we call it. So, what we'd like to do is return that to a functional use. It's a good opportunity for us. We already do wedding showers and bridal showers, birthday parties. Unfortunately, now, we've been around for 50 years, and now we're doing some celebration of lives of people who met at the stone church. And they are choosing the stone church to do the celebration of life. Done two of those in the last couple of months. So, what we want to do is be able to use the second floor for functions. Basically, there'd be weekend daytime functions, but we'd also want to open it up in the evenings on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday evenings, when it's not that busy. Fridays and Saturdays, when we're really hopping downstairs, the second floor is not really usable. The noise just comes right through and everything's vibrating. So, it's not, it's not really conducive to being used during, when we have a major event.
Thank you. Do you want to go through the?
I think we just have a couple of questions.
Yes.
So, Mike, have you actually submitted an application for a site plan review? Or are you requesting?
Yes, we did under request, the planner asked that if we submit a site plan review.
So, have, have the butters been notified?
Yes, all the butters were notified. And we actually went overboard on that a little bit. We went kind of tangential just to make sure we covered everybody.
So, if I can just ask, so the, an application for minor site plan review?
Minor, correct. And I do have two waiver requests within that.
Hold on, it's time, Mike.
Yeah. Okay. So, under minor site plan review, and I understand you're asking for some waivers for minor site plan review. But is, minor site plan review would be allowed if the, if the, the site has 2,000 square feet or less of gross floor area. I'm under 105B. There's four items that, under, under A, there's four items that don't require site plan review. That the applicant could just go and do, you know, this. But because it's over 500 square feet, it jumps up to, then you go to the minor for the new members, if they want to follow with regulations. And to apply for a minor, the site has to have 2,000 square feet or less of gross floor area, as long as there's no change.
So, the changing use portion is 14-something.
Okay. But, but your gross floor area is over 2,000 square feet.
Yeah, but I'm not requesting a change of use for the other, the other portion.
Okay, but that, but what I'm getting at is, under our regulations, 105B1 is for a change of use of a non-residential site for which no change in floor area is proposed and which either, so number one, you are proposing a change in floor area.
Uh, change of use, there's no change in floor area. It's no construction's going to occur.
Well, I understand that I'm reading the application for what triggers a minor versus a major, and I'm wondering if we're looking at the correct, if the application is correct. And that's what I'm trying to get to.
Yeah. This is under guidance from the planner that it would be a minor because it was, the change of use was under 2,000 square feet.
That's gross floor area.
Yeah.
We have, I think we have an issue with our regulations relative to these types of applications.
Oh, I, I agree with you.
Because when you read the application, it should've gone to major.
Cause he's not, he's not asking for, he's not changing the floor area.
Correct.
The floor area that's already there. He's changing the use of it, right?
He's changing the use from storage to.
Right.
To, you know, some type of public use and the gross floor area is over 2,000 square feet. It's the site with 2,000 square feet or less of gross floor area. He has over that. The site has over it.
That's the way I read this. It's either or.
No, no, this is this part and which either.
Oh, all right, well, for a sec, yes.
And then number two, the expansion of non-residential floor is spaced by 500 square feet or less. We know that that's doesn't apply and that's why he's asking for a waiver. I'm just not sure that Diane, that the planner directed you to the right, the right section of the ordinance. Cause you, it doesn't really qualify under that section.
So, under a major.
Correct, and then under the major, we could be looking at the waivers that are required under major. We should have some ability as the planning board to be able to determine what. Cause if you go further back into the ordinance, we're not supposed to waive anything under Section 1. Under 501, the waivers.
So, where does that leave us?
Well, that's why I was wondering if we're looking, are you requesting a waiver from site plan review?
Well, that's what I originally requested.
It feels like.
And then I was advised that, no, I shouldn't actually apply for the, I shouldn't ask for a waiver of site.
So, I think what you're looking for is a waiver from major site plan to a minor. And then within minor, it appears from the packet that you presented, you're looking for specific waivers as to requirements under minor site plan review.
Okay, yeah, it's not the guidance I received, but.
So, that's a, that's a process then, which.
Right.
Which we've gotta get right anyway.
Well, only to make sure that, that before we can accept the application, that we're accepting a correct application, number one. And then we're rendering the decision on that application.
So, the thing that'd be curious to me though is if this were two tenant spaces, would you still take the aggregate of the entire building or if this were 15?
It's not the building, it's the site.
Well, there's, yeah, there's, the change of use is within the building.
Correct, and then for the.
The site, I mean, it certainly, because typically the site, I mean.
Right, so you, you have a change of use in the building.
Right.
Okay, or the non-residential site. So, you have a change of use happening.
Right.
And for which no change in floor area is proposed.
Right, that's correct.
Cause you're not looking to build anything.
No.
And which either maintains or decreases the intensity or use of the site with respect to parking, beginning in traffic. You're proposing that it's not.
It's not gonna change, yeah.
Or for a site with 2,000 square feet or less of gross floor area.
So, he still falls under the first part.
Yeah, the first part seems to fit.
Seems to fit. He's saying it fits.
So, you're looking, you're saying it fits there is what Diane is saying.
Right.
And that there's expansion of, no, of residential. So, the question is, can we waive this for an application to keep it under minor?
Oh, right. The other threshold is 500 square feet for minor, but I'm with the understanding that we can waive anything we wanna waive.
Well, and I think particularly given what the circumstances are. And there's, I know there's been other applications before the board over the years.
Yes, the mills.
Did you research anything, whether or not?
Yeah, the mills received a waiver of site plan review for their, at one point in time, for their uses inside the mills.
No, I mean, to this, to this property. Did you, did you?
Yeah, I can speak to that.
Okay.
Cause I, I actually read, went through the file today, that's sitting here as we speak. So, I think in 2005, there was a site plan approved to add the patio outside.
Correct, yeah.
Which at the time, I think, added 60 seats.
Yep.
For the outside. And at that time, it was, the, all the waivers were granted, it was approved, as long as there was no music outside. I think there was a time limit of no serving after.
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock or something out there. People could smoke out there if they wanted, whatever.
Yeah.
Ironically enough, there is a, an approval from the planning board in 1996 to renovate the upstairs.
Correct.
Exactly what you're trying to do, right?
Right, correct.
That obviously never.
Never happened, yeah.
Never happened.
Right, right.
So, if it was approved by the site, for the site, why would the applicant not be able to exercise the rights under that prior approval? Well, there may not have been a time period unless it was a condition of approval.
There was no time period on the, on the approval that I saw. But it was to renovate the whole upstairs and make it, what you just said, the ballroom usable again.
And the issue of timing is just relative to vesting of rights in case their zoning is changed.
Approvals can lapse after a period of time.
Automatically?
Yes.
But how would you know when?
Yeah, I don't.
You'd have to go back and look at the regulations every time in 1996.
Cause he's actually asking it to go back to what it was.
Oh, yeah, well, actually, Bill, why don't you come sit up here?
I'm sorry.
There's a microphone up here and I'm hearing that people at home are having a hard time hearing us as it is.
So, there is the file.
There's a file right here.
And you didn't see any conditions on the approval of.
There were conditions, but not related to timeframe or anything like that.
No, the condition was enclosing the dumpster, not serving after 10 o'clock, not having outdoor amplified music after 10 o'clock. And there was, both of those approvals were done under this minor site plan as well. Those, we, really, cause it, the major really gets into drainage analysis, which we're not actually changing anything on the site. So, I think that's why it fell under the minors. It, we're, we're actually not changing the site at all.
Right, and, and one of the issues in the previous approvals was capacity. What is the capacity, what is your legal fire capacity now?
Right now, it's actually, it changed since some of those previous ones because of the Rhode Island nightclub fire. And it was brought down to 100 because if you're a nightclub, you cannot have over 100 people if you do not have a sprinkler system. But we're actually putting that in right now. The pipe's in there, it's just got air in the pipe right now. But it's, it's being put in every day, they're working on it. So, the capacity could increase, but it's, right now, it's 100 people.
Because you'd have to meet the building, the life safety codes for the building.
Exactly.
Relative to what the building.
Exactly, no matter what you guys do, I still have to meet the life safety code, right?
In the way I read your, your letter, you're not gonna, this is not gonna increase the capacity of the building?
No, no, this is not at all. It's, this is going to be used primarily as some, I mean, one of the big driving forces is more rental income, quite frankly. And the only time we can rent it is when the downstairs isn't being used. So, it's not gonna be concurrent use except for, we would like on, on slow nights to be able to move the pool table upstairs. And on a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, you know, open it up. Friday and Saturday, we actually envision allowing the bands to use it as their break room, just so they can take a break and get away from the crowd. It wouldn't be open to the public because when, but again, when bands playing up there, there's their metal walls and they actually vibrate. They're tin walls, like a tin ceiling, and it's, it's kinda untenable up there if a band's playing, or not, not quite usable.
Is everybody in the board here for my own design?
Yes.
So, and on the prior approvals relative to the parking and, which I think is what we're getting to, if there's an increase in intensity of use of the, of the site.
Yeah, but also in the M2 district, there's, you're exempted from the parking requirements.
I just wanted to bring that up.
Can you restate that, please?
In the M2 zone, you're, the M2 zone is really for like the urban area. We have one in the M2 zones. And so, there's really no specific onsite parking requirements that have to be met onsite. Cause you can use like the, like public parking as part of your, your analysis. And if you think about all the restaurants downtown, or businesses downtown, it's not like they have onsite parking. Cause they just don't have the space for that.
So, Mike, now I was looking that up.
Well, Bill might know something about it.
Yeah, that's, the, the M2, the parking thing is under the site plan requirements, Section 3.02. And that's where it does state in all zoning districts, except the M1, M2. Each site shall be provided with at least minimums number of parking spaces for the site, determined by the sum of the following for its uses of the site. And, and as it is, we actually do have, we have, we are able to easily fit 40 cars in the parking lot. If we have a parking lot attendant, we get 48, but we park in our employees and things like, we actually direct people. And then we have nine in the lower lot. And then there's a municipal lot in between the historical society and ourselves, which actually we own a piece of that. But we, we get 12 to 15 cars in that lot. So, we actually would meet that even irrespective of the fact we're not required to provide parking.
And a big, and a big, the big purpose of site plan review are things like drainage and parking, traffic flow. And so, the parking doesn't apply cause it's M2. The drainage isn't going to apply because he's not, you know, he's not expanding anything on the site. So, and we're in the urban setting, so is the traffic really going to be greater because there's more, a space that's now available?
Well, one of the previous submittals approvals, I can't remember the owner's name at the time, but they did a, not, and not a traffic study, but they did a study on the patrons and I think the number from other, 27% of the people that were, that go there, walk there.
It's actually amazing. I, on a snow night, I chose to open and I, and I, about 7:00, I went down and I thought it was a big mistake. No, there wasn't a single car. I got in there and there were about 60 people inside. So, there are quite a few people that do walk, which is nice to see.
And, and my opinion is that this is one of the situations where our regulations are, could be unduly onerous. This is a situation where potentially renovating area inside, the parking's not gonna change, the drainage isn't gonna change. Nothing's gonna change, it's not gonna increase its peak capacity, and that's governed by the fire department, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
What's the harm in, Sam, go ahead.
I think my only question, and I agree with all that, is, you know, right now, it's not concurrent use between the two areas. But, well, and I guess the changes that would have to happen would also have to become, again, before the board for approval to make the. So, for exactly insulate the space from noise or are the kinds of changes, are those required?
No, that, those are not required. He's here because of the change in use, not because of the renovation.
Later, I mean.
No. See, wanting to insulate it later, that's not a planning board issue, that would be just a, a building code issue.
Okay, but in that case, it would make the spaces concurrently usable, so that could impact parking in a later time.
Oh, I think, I think we could approve it with a stipulation that it's not, I mean.
But again, this, this M2 zone does, parking were exempted from in the zone completely. And that's to encourage a intense downtown use. And what you don't want with a downtown is to take up all sorts of space with parking. It should be geared towards people, not cars. Because then you won't attract people. If there are parking lots all over Portsmouth, Portsmouth wouldn't attract as many people as they do. And so, that's what downtown urban areas wanna do is concentrate on human scale uses and not expansive parking areas. And, and really what we should be working towards is a park wants community where people come into town, they park towards the outskirts, park wants and walk in and walk about because they'll actually spend more money and time. And it's better for the community if people are actually walking than in their cars going from one store to the next and parking in each parking lot. Kind of the same reason most places wouldn't allow a drive-through in their downtown. You don't wanna take that human scale away from your downtown.
We actually do that a lot. My wife and I park downtown, walk all over places. Like, a lot of people do that. You find a parking spot, stay there.
If it's close, if the uses are close enough, people will do that. But if they're scattered by parking lots, it's like walking a miracle mile. You just don't do it.
Right, right.
So, I'm curious to follow up on Bill's comment. Because as I read under 6764A on revocation of recorded approvals, the planning board has to take, or the government, yeah, the planning board has to take action to replicate.
Yes, if you're, if you're purposely replicating your approval, purposely replicating your approval would require action. But typically, site plan approvals are good for a, a, a year or so. For example, there was one before us earlier that said they had an approval, they did not complete the construction and that approval was gone.
Well, the, the, the vesting of it has gone, not the approval. Because he didn't meet the conditions to, to, of what was required to vest the approval. So, if zoning is changed, then he wouldn't be able to move forward with that project. But the industrial part could definitely move forward with the project that was approved in 2016. Cause, but, but the vesting wasn't met. So, if we had modified the zoning.
And I, you know, I understand what, what Bill is saying. I do a lot of work in Massachusetts and half the towns have site plans last forever and half of them have them expire after three years or five years. Just depends on where you, where you're working. So, I didn't see anything that said this thing expired. However, seeing we have an application in front of us, or maybe an application in front of us. I think for Clarence sake, we're better off going forward and approving it and there's no discussion about trying to use a 1996 approval, whether it's valid or not or whatnot. And I personally think that I'm comfortable with waiving all our site plan requirements, but this is a very unique situation where nothing is changing. The last time we had something similar to this was the funeral home, when the Eagles went in the funeral home. Remember, they came in and we waived all the site plan, cause they weren't changing anything, they were just changing the building. This is very similar to that situation.
And I, I personally did, did one as well with the Durgen Block, which is the building that has the oak house. The second floor was a place of assembly.
Right.
And I came at that point in time, Clay Mitchell was the planner, and it was a, a, a very abbreviated minor. And, and what really I don't wanna have to do is hire a surveyor, really, you know, it's been, nothing's changing. I, I don't wanna do a drainage analysis. All these things are several hundreds of dollars. It's, it's, nothing's changing on the site, so the survey's the same. I don't, you know, I don't wanna, you know, locate all my drainage structures. Weren't it to $2,000 or something, but I didn't want it done.
I don't think the intent.
Or more.
I don't think the, the intent and purpose of the site plan review regulations is relative to the use of this space that's, that's, or the change of use in this space in the M2 zone. Because parking is exempt. It's not like you have to ask for the waiver. And you're not changing any of the building, so therefore, none of the drainage is changing. I mean, I know I'm repeating myself. And we don't really deal with traffic impacts.
So, can we get to the point? Is everybody complicated to the point where we accept this and?
Do we have an application?
But that's, first the question is.
That's what Diane.
I think the first question is if we feel, are we, do we feel we have an application before us, is this substantially complete? And it's a cart before the horse because he's asking for a waiver from the, from the applica- from the minor review application. Right?
Yes.
And what's required under minor review, it's required to be part of the application that would make it substantially complete.
Right, so, yeah, there's no way, yeah.
It's like it just doesn't fit.
Right.
There is, there is a formal format for a minor application, though.
Yes.
Yes, and we filled out all of that except for the boundary survey showing the drainage facilities, setbacks, bicycle, wheelchair facilities.
I just didn't get a copy of it.
Yeah.
You know. You know, uh.
That's, that's a plan, now that, that's not.
Yeah, he didn't not send everyone a copy of the actual application, that's why I asked, like, if he had filled one out.
Yeah, this is, I haven't.
And the, the biggest part about that is a, is a butter notification. So, the, so if there are any abutters concerned with what's being proposed, they can come in the public forum, you know, and, and listen to what's proposed.
Did she leave a file behind with you, by chance, because that would have all the term receipts for the a butter notification stapled into the back of it, probably?
Let's see what we have.
So, I guess we can write a decision if we feel it's substantially complete, even if it doesn't have those particular items. Because they're on the same file. Oh, we don't have the file. Do you have a copy?
I do.
Of what was submitted?
I do, it's a copy of the application.
So, all the fees have been paid?
Yeah.
For minor review?
For, yes.
And all the public notices?
Yep. And we, I said, on the butters.
You signed the, you're the applicant owner, right, you own this?
That's correct.
Yeah, so everything else is. Yeah, so there's. Yeah, the application is, is filled out and completed.
Well.
With the, and with the exception of the, the items that Mike had mentioned, and he's requesting waivers from as part of the application. So, I would, I would, I'll make a motion that we accept the application for Zion Hill LLC, at five Granite Street, tax map U2 lot five M2, for proposed change of use within the M2 zone, utilize the second floor of the stone church, currently used for storage in the multifunction room, as being substantially complete.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so the application is complete?
Or accepted.
Or accepted, I mean, I'm sorry, it's accepted.
Yes.
Accepted, yes.
Yeah, and then there's just the two waivers.
The way I told, waivers.
Talk about waivers, then.
Before, before we do, can I just ask a quick question? I, I may have misheard, did you say that this proposal does not, does not include an increase in capacity?
Um, it, it, the fire code would require that, we're not going to have an increase, by using the second floor, that's not going to change what we can functionally do, because.
I just don't want you to limit yourself, if you're stating that, I'm, I'm seeking approval based on the fact that there will be no increase in capacity, you're going to be held to that, so I just want to make sure that's what you want to do.
Well, the capacity will be changing with the sprinkler system, this property used to have a capacity of two hundred and eighty people at one point in time. We never want to go back to that, we don't, that's uncomfortable, that's not the tight place we want to be.
I was there.
What's that, you were there, yeah? And, and that was before it had, the exits it now has, it was actually kind of scary that they did that. But, no, but once the sprinkler system's installed, we would like to go back up to something along lanes of a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty people. But, when we do that, that's going to be on the first floor, when we do that, we're not going to be doing anything on the second floor, because all our efforts are going to be on the first floor. The second floor then would only be used for, like, a band break room, because we just can't be dealing, functionally, we just don't have staffing the capabilities of operating both, and we have no interest in operating both concurrently, it's just not, it, it wouldn't be that functional.
But you want to take yourself the ability to.
I guess, I guess, yeah, I wouldn't want to limit that, you know, forever and ever.
Well, as, I think what Bill's referring to is, so it changes, instead of a music venue, it could be a full-flung restaurant, now you've got two floors and the fire permit is going to let you do that, and then that's, you know, increased use. There's nothing that you would state you're coming back to the planning board for that, under.
Right.
Right, so, obviously, I wouldn't want to limit myself, you know, from a legal perspective.
I think that's what Bill was referring to.
Yeah, no, I'd rather leave the door open, but I just don't envision it, it's just, um.
But, but the occupancy is, sorry, that the occupancy is, is regulated by the fire codes.
Correct, yes.
That's what I was going to ask, with the, with the sprinkler system.
Yeah.
What is a maximum capacity you can have there?
Uh, it would be two oh, two hundred and eight people.
Okay.
On one, actually, and that's on the first floor.
Okay.
It would have to take the tables out for that, because you actually do a cut, different calculation when you have tables out, taken out of the room.
So, that's not a practical capacity, then, unless you take the furniture and throw it aside?
Well, we actually very regularly take two or four tables out, and we plan to have, you know, a lot of people dancing, because we're kind of a, we're kind of a restaurant, and then at, you know, ten o'clock at night, we're more of a nightclub. So, we, so we all of a sudden, we, we will take tables out to make a bigger dance floor, which opens up floor area.
Well, none of that, again, none of that, in my opinion, changes anything we're talking about.
No, no, not really, not at all. No, no.
So, doubling capacity does not trigger site plan review?
I don't think.
Well, that becomes the question, because then you, it's really more of a traffic.
Right.
You know, so does that trigger it, or I don't think that's under minor.
No, I don't, I think that's a major site plan review for traffic report, uh, engineering.
We've already said parking isn't relevant.
Well, we're still trying to avoid major.
Right, exactly, exactly.
We're not sure yet.
Right.
Yeah, because, I mean, in reality, numerous people have done the same thing, but without going before the board. Just people just unaware of their requirements. Every time the space that we now know and love is Gajuju rents as a different use. If it goes from mercantile to service, uh, personal services, that technically should be a site plan review, but it doesn't happen. Or, you know, the New England footwear becomes the Russian ballet, which has happened, but they didn't go, or, you know, the Rodeo's flooring. You know, so it's just that I knew the regulations that applied, most people don't actually do this, they just rent it to a new person and, um, nothing happens.
So, the nineteen ninety-six approval limited the capacity to two hundred and twenty-five people.
I'd be fine with that. And, you know, I guess.
Unless a lower amount is specified by the fire chief.
Right, right, yeah, he's always got that, yeah, yeah.
So, is, is one of the hurdles, section five oh one, it says, I think it says something like rarely? I don't think it says never, but like rarely.
Yes.
Rent a waiver?
The wording is unlikely.
Unlikely.
Due to the probable violation of the purpose and intent of this regulation, is unlikely that we risk for any portions of section one would be granted. But, but again, the purpose and the intent has to do with parking, traffic, drainage, you know, public.
Notice, which we did.
Public benefits.
Right, and I, I do feel that.
Right.
A big component of the intent is to notify the abutters and allow input, and we did that by going forward with the application process, rather than just applying, and that was Diana's guidance as well, was go forward with the application and don't, don't apply for a waiver of site plan review. She was pretty, felt strongly about that. I, I thought I might have had an opportunity to waive her site plan review, but she felt that we should go forward with the application and waive the, just the specific components that were on her in this case.
Does anybody have any concerns about this? I'm not hearing a lot of concerns.
So, on Friday and Saturday, you're obviously monitoring the population.
Oh, yeah.
Tickets, and, so on, like, bluegrass on Tuesdays, would you be having to monitor the population as well, not saying it's going to exceed?
I wish I had to, I can pull up the camera right now and show you about twenty people there.
And this is when upstairs is open, because on Friday and Saturdays, it's probably closed.
Right, exactly.
During peak hours.
And this is so that we could do something like, put the billiards table upstairs, which we can't easily move that for a Friday or Saturday night, but I'd like to do a regular billiards table, where people aren't dropping quarters, and a shuffleboard table, which is kind of big, takes up a lot of room.
Yeah, we don't want to get into too much detail on that.
Yeah, sorry.
None of your business how you see fit.
Yeah.
As long as we're comfortable that the parking is adequate, the drainage is adequate.
Yeah.
Any other concerns we have, I think that's as deep as we want to get.
No wetlands, I can tell you that.
Drainage is out, but I have no idea.
Well, it's no different than what's there now.
Well, Brad, that's.
But, but that's it, better. All right, Val, do you have any ideas on how we get to, I'm hearing a lot of, a lot of concern about this. We, we've accepted the application, and we, we site plan requirements, and.
I'm not sh- I'm not sure, I don't, I don't feel like putting the burden on the applicant is going to give us any additional information of how we're rendering our decision relative to our regulations, or as I understand the regulations.
I agree. I don't see it as any benefit to, as much as I'd like to see a higher, real good engineer to do a drainage analysis, but I don't change anything.
And a surveyor to survey the law, preferably, preferably a local one.
So, my, my opinion is we, what I'm hearing is we should, I think we should.
Well, let's deal with the waivers.
Take waivers, right, exactly. All right, so the first waiver.
So, I'll make a motion to grant the applicant's waiver request from section two point oh three B, requiring three copies of a site script, show a drainage facility, setbacks, bicycle, wheelchair facilities, etc.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Second waiver request, Val?
I would make a motion to grant a waiver, the applicant's waiver request for, to section two point oh three, subsection four, to have a boundary survey prepared by a licensed land surveyor.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Motion passes unanimously. So, will we now? Go ahead.
Do you, do you want to look at a, a means of documenting how you discern that this is a minor and not a major?
Uh, well, we granted the, whoa, and we should grant a waiver to.
Well, it's really, there's a decision that it is a minor and not a major.
Right.
And, do we need to?
I think we need to waive section one point oh five B two, because that's limited to five hundred square feet.
Which would, then it would fit in a minor category.
And that's, and with no change of use, so he's over five hundred square feet and there's a change of use.
Everything else would fit into the minor categories, but, but with minor, is there a motion for that, Val?
Well, the applicant has to provide it in writing.
But the, that portion, that's for under five hundred square feet, there is no site plan review for, in the M1 or M2 zone, is that the one you're reading?
No. But you're, so, minor review, a minor review by the planning board should require for the following, expansion of non-residential floor space by five hundred square feet or less with no change of use.
Okay, yeah.
Do you have a pen and a piece of paper with me?
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. I'll, I'll drop something off if you'd like, if that seems to be the most appropriate thing to do, because it seems to be, I don't want to waste the board's time coming back, doing this again.
I think we need to make the motion subject to the applicant providing the, the written waiver request.
Sure.
And it's okay that the request is being given tonight, not so many days before?
Yes.
Right, yeah, waivers can.
It's supposed to be.
Yeah, waivers can be.
Oftentimes, you don't realize this waiver is required until you go into the review process. So, do you want to make that motion, Val?
So, I will make a motion to grant a waiver to section one point oh five B. I'll just leave it at that, to, for our minor, to, for, for minor review by the planning board of this application, subject to the applicant providing the written waiver request.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye.
So, Mike, in your waiver request, can you just also have it consistent with the other waiver requests?
Yes, absolutely.
So that they meet the, what's required under the waivers?
Yeah.
So, now there's nothing left to put, motion, vote, where, taking care of all the waivers?
Any more discussion?
Anybody have any questions on that? Any conditions? Any conditions?
I just have a comment.
Yes.
I remember talk about this change of use for, after like two thousand and one, or whenever the stone church was renovated, at those owners, and it never happened, so it's really curious to see.
Yeah, they were going to do music lessons, and they really were going to use that upstairs space.
It's been a long time coming.
Thank you.
It's great to see somebody actually going forward.
It's really fun, we've had a lot of great programs go there.
Absolutely.
Local Government One Oh One is one of the, one of the council members presented, and doing a TED Talk type series, which is, is nice. So, we're also fulfilling the meeting house role of the, of the organization.
It's a unique site, certainly is, it doesn't fit neatly into our site plan.
We had a highly successful fundraiser for the high school, we had, we're having one for Epping coming up, we just did one for Oyster River, so also doing these fundraisers, which are fantastic, which I'm, I'm happy to be part of.
Uh, make a motion, we approve the application for Zion Hill LLC, the five granite, granite street, tax map U2 lot five in the M2 zone, to, for the change of use, to utilize the second floor of the stone church, currently used for storage into a multifunction room.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any seconds? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Quite my own application.
Good thing you had it with you. So, I think this brings up a whole thing of revisiting this section of the ordinance. You know, especially for properties in the M1 and M2 zone.
Yeah, I agree.
Because it's certainly not black and white clear, and there should be within the ordinance, some other avenues.
Or a way of approaching.
And, or the process, right, exactly.
Great. Somebody should think about putting together a little committee, okay?
We really should, the last time we updated these was many, many years ago.
I'd like to be on a committee doing that, because I, I do think some of our regulations are outdated, and in some cases, onerous, like in this case.
Sure, Diane, any additional comments as well?
Absolutely.
Right. Well, and you have to be equitable amongst other applicants that come in, which, and obviously, there were a couple of examples. You know, that kind of fit into this, uh, you know, particular mold.
I agree.
So, you're going to bring that up to Diane?
Yes. Continuing on for, um. Continuing on, for, doing all business, appointments to committees. If I remember right, CIP was Rosie and Nina?
I was the alternate.
Do you, does anybody want to volunteer for the CIP, or do you want to volunteer to be a representative of the CIP?
I can do it.
That's great, that's a huge committee, Diane.
Does anybody want to volunteer to be an alternate?
I would recommend for any of the new members, it's quite enlightening, because you get to understand how the town works, and you get to understand the direction of where the department heads like to go. It's, if you want to learn more about how the town works, I highly recommend it.
And I don't need any answers tonight, just, you can think about it, and you want to come back in the next meeting and say you want to be an alternate, whatever, that's fine.
And when do they meet?
Well, last year, we started very early, and Rosie was kind of driving that, so I would kind of defer to Diane about, you know, the other members of the CIP.
Typically during the day, or at night?
Yeah, most of the time was during the day.
And it's driven by the budget cycle, so.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Conservation Commission, who's the, our representative?
It was Roseanne.
It was Roseanne.
Does anybody want to volunteer for that?
My husband's on that, so is that a conflict of interest?
I don't think so, there's nothing, nothing to even gain by being on it. You want to be on it?
No, if somebody else wants to, I'll do it. But if nobody else wants to, I'll do it.
Okay, you can do it.
Thanks.
Now, do you want to do the economic committee, development committee?
Yeah, because, and we should be finishing that up.
Stormwater Committee.
I'll be on the Stormwater, yeah. I think we already discussed that last week.
So want to be the alternate?
And Gretchen?
Yeah.
Energy and Environment Advisory Committee, that was, um-
Now, the Stormwater Committee is actually a committee of the planning board.
Right.
It's not a representative to a committee. So don't we have three members on that?
You have an alternate member, I believe, that's-
Oh, so maybe one of them want to put through the decision, yes. I'll have to find out from Diane.
Who else was on that?
Is anybody here on it still, so we need?
Nothing, I don't.
All right, so-
So I'll go on that one, too.
All right, so you two, and Val.
Because that's, yeah, because that's getting into some of this rewriting.
Yep. And the Energy and Environment Advisory Committee, was that not Peter?
That's an appointee. One member of the planning board.
Right, what was, was Peter Nelson?
I think so.
I think he was there.
Yeah, I think he was.
Any one of those here for that? All right, we'll leave it. If anybody has an epiphany, just let us know.
So you need an alternate for CIP, which is a critical one.
Yes. We need to figure out the Stormwater, oh, we got that, I'm sorry, we're going to, and, all right, Chairman's report. I have nothing. Shockingly, nothing, shocking. Committee reports, any reports?
Town Council?
Yeah, Diane already mentioned earlier, the first reading for the amendment to the ordinance, is that?
But then, has there been a discussion on the joint meeting, the annual joint meeting between the boards?
I think that came up, but we have to check with the chairman, Mike, I think it was. Do you want me to take that back and ask about that?
Yeah, because we should, every, we're supposed to have an annual meeting.
And Janice?
I'll join the meeting. Make the motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I have it, thank you very much. It was a very productive meeting.